Okay, we'll call this meeting in order. The Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, February the 5th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Tralca?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Would you please join us in a moment of silence? Okay, would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item one, agenda received as proposed or amended.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item two is public comments. Anybody like to speak to the board this time? It's not an agenda item. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item three, claims and payments, Resolution A.
Yes, the county's expenditures this week total 140,497.59. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
And item B.
Country View's expenditures this week, including, and this includes the remaining bills due to the county, 68,531.10.
Motion approved.
Second.
We're probably getting to the end of them, maybe?
Yes, we had a couple repairs out there to the sewer line. We'll have those invoices. We may have a couple other straggling ones, but we're, we should be towards the end.
Okay, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, item four is received project updates from department heads and our elected officials. Morning Cathy.
Morning Cathy.
Good morning, Board. Cathy Nicholas, just a brief update on the road conditions. The paved roads are in fine condition this morning. The gravel roads, due to the very soggy and mushy conditions over the weekend, due to the weekend weather and the refreezing over the past night, those, some of the gravel roads are in pretty rough condition. There's some potholes, there's some ruts, just due to the traffic and then the refreezing. We're trying to get those taken off and filled in as best we can. We do expect ice storm probably moving in this afternoon. It may be with us through Thursday. The graders will not be out at all, most likely then, but trucks will be outstanding and salting as needed. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item five, minutes approved for January the 29th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item six, consent agenda, this will be made with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, item seven is reports. This is motion semi-annual settlement of Board of Supervisors Rita M. Schmidt. This is from July 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019. Be received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Rita, you want to add anything? Okay.
Should that be 18, December 18?
Yes, it should be December 18.
Okay, that's right.
Corrections noted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, item B is semi-annual report Rita M. Schmidt treasure for period of July 1st, 2018 through December 31st. That's supposed to be 2018, too?
Yep.
Okay?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item C is another motion, the semi-annual investment report Rita M. Schmidt treasure for the period of 1 July 2018 through 31st, December 31st, 2018. Be received, placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, item eight is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution, lowest bid received from Cook Construction Cedar Falls, Iowa for the Pine Crest remodel project with a bid of 51,885. Be approved.
So moved.
Okay.
Morning Rory.
Morning Board. Rory Givney, Maintenance Superintendent. As you know, we received five proposals for this project. We did review all five of those. Cook Construction was the low bid. We have a substantial completion date, which was identified in the RFP of May 15, 2019. We anticipate this project to commence yet this month after receiving contracts.
What was the budgeted amount?
The budget amount was 150,000.
And that was due to changes where you might want to explain that.
Yeah, let me go into some detail. So when we put this project together, we did work with a local engineer, architect firm, actually. And on this restroom where this is located, we had one wall that had a pretty significant amount of electrical. It was one of the primary electrical locations on this first floor. We did anticipate worst-case scenario of having to move or relocate some of that electrical. And so when we originally put the budgetary number together, we factored that into the project. After the design, after the consultant was hired and we actually got down to designing these restrooms, we found that we were able to accommodate the space by redoing the wall on the opposite side of the restroom, which allowed us to save that cost from having to get into the significant structural part of it. We also looked at some different materials of construction for this restroom. As I indicated before to the board, this particular restroom has seen some vandalism in the past. And so we really, our focus was ultimately to make these restrooms ADA compliant, but also use a material that was very robust and, but yet still will be a very nice restroom when it's completed. But it'll be, I guess, I won't say vandal-proof, but we did take all efforts to do that, so. Any other questions?
Thank you Rory.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item nine, other business. This is a motion to travel request submitted by Kim Veder, IT Director, be approved and Director Chair sign for $259.92 to attend Isaac.
Second.
Any questions on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item B, this is a motion, accept the resignation of Jeffrey Dallas Commissioner for the Black Hawk County Veteran Affairs Commission effective January 29, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item C is a motion, accept the resignation from Kevin Neil as the Director for Black Hawk County Veteran Affairs Office effective February 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item D is a resolution to authorize and direct Waterloo City Building officials to reissue a building permit for completion of construction on 8521 Kimball Avenue and to issue immediately a temporary occupancy permit for the same premises within 30 days of being given a list of safety code requirements by the Waterloo Building. And they're, the county contracts with them to do our code enforcement, also our building. What do we have here for Waterloo? Would you like to address it first? Can we kind of give the board an update on what's going on and?
Greg Allhelm, City Waterloo Building official. Basically, what the deal is, is this home started construction in 1999, and at the time it sat on more than 35 acres, so a building permit would not have been required and the owner, as the home progressed, could live in it. It changed ownership, I believe, in September, and it still was on more than 35 acres, but as of November 1st, it was parceled out, so now it's required to have a building permit. So basically, I'm just looking to be able to issue a building permit and once life safety is in place, get a temporary occupancy.
Question, why that comes before us today? Why, was that just taken care of?
Well, I'm just looking for your guidance, I guess, as I'm not the county building official and we are contracted with you.
Yeah, I've been consulting with Greg and with Nate Miller on this, who represents the homeowners there, and I believe he's in attendance today as well. I've got, this is actually a really unique situation. It's what will be a beautiful house when it's completed. I've got pictures of it if you want to see it. They're online on Zillow as well. The homeowner who, the original homeowner, for reasons unknown to me, just quit working on it, didn't need to have an occupancy permit, didn't need to have a building permit. Current homeowners, I've determined, tried to do it the right way, got a building permit. That was later revoked for reasons that I think Greg could probably explain, but in any event, they, they're living in it, and had they not partitioned off, you know, nearly all of the property, they would not even be subject to a building permit. They want the, you know, they want to continue with this construction. They want to do it under, you know, have inspections, they want to have a permit. They're not trying to, to do anything on the fly or the wrong way, I've determined. Fact of the matter is, they've had at least one contractor who revised an estimate to be way higher. I think I heard from, from Mr. Miller that it was eight times higher than originally estimated for one of the projects. So what I've consulted with Mr. Allhelm about is, we need to get certain safety things in place that can be done quickly. Namely, there's railings along a stairway, railings along an upper floor. These are things that can be constructed in short order, smoke alarms possibly. There's some dispute as to whether there's smoke alarms in it. They just need to get some up. They can get those at the store today if need be. They may have already done so. And I think there's a construction stairway that's being used as the entrance for the house right now. That needs to have railings as well. But those are the very limited safety issues. And then beyond that, it's more, you know, getting the sheetrock and done, getting, there's no dangers in here and the pictures depict that. The wiring's in conduit, which is actually above code. The place looks, you know, stable. I think you'd agree with that, wouldn't you? Yeah, so it's, would you like to see the pictures? No?
I did look it up, so.
You looked it up.
It's on Black Hawk County outline.
Yeah, and so it's, it's pretty elaborate and, and this is with the hope that then we can finally get this project done, rather than potentially sending these people off to a rental property where they have indicated that it's probably going to force them into bankruptcy. Mr. Enen, the homeowner here, has, he's a, he's a local firefighter. He's, he's, you know, of somewhat limited means, but he has, you know, gone through and been approved to, to get the loans necessary to buy the place and to work on it. It's just going to take a little longer than originally anticipated.
So Greg, we pass this resolution, it's basically giving him 30 days. From when? Today, when we pass it?
Yes, well, once he obtains a building permit.
So if it's next week, that 30 days starts, usually it's from when the board passes the resolution?
Okay.
So I'd almost think the effective date would be today?
Okay.
What then?
Well, we'll get a building permit issued and, like Michael said, we'll get life safety in place, and I'll be able to issue a temporary occupancy.
But I'm saying, what after 30 days then?
Well, I would hope, I would think they can get everything in place within 30 days, and the homeowner has, has stressed that he will, he will do that.
Okay, and if it doesn't, what's the next step for you or?
Possibly an extension.
Okay.
Depending on how close he is, I guess.
Yeah.
Is the homeowner here? Would you like to put podium, maybe speak on it, or you don't have to if you don't want to? Give your name and address, please.
Travis Enen, 8521 Kimball. I don't know, if you have any questions, I can speak on it if you want, or if you have any specific questions, I can answer.
You got the house fully covered?
Yes.
Insurance wise?
Yep, house is covered. We were just, we were unsure as about the occupancy permit. We didn't, we had no idea that we had to acquire one of those. Honestly, I thought it was already in place. We went about this purposely to have the code enforcement in the house because we wanted it done correctly. We could have went a different route, sold the property later on, finished the house and not had anyone in there. We picked this because we thought it would be safer and more correct, and this was an unforeseen thing that happened to us. In fact, the only thing, the only reason it came about was because the electrical inspector came out to do the rough-in. There were smoke alarms in prior to the rough-in, and then when they did the rough-in, as you know, probably they, they wire in these smoke alarms and they don't put them up, you know, until you put the sheetrock in. So the day that he was there, there were no smoke alarms. He left. I found out the next day that he had issues with some of the things, and we put his, we put the smoke alarms in within, I think, 15 minutes. They're all in right now, so.
So you're, you're aware then of what this action today does? Gives you the 30 days from today?
Correct, and I don't, I haven't seen the actual list of things that they want us to do. I know that there's some railings on there. If it, is this consistent of the railings? I mean, that stuff could be done by the end of the day. It's not a very expensive thing.
That was my question, really, if they'd seen the list and thought it was doable in 30 days.
We haven't seen the list specifically, but I did talk to Greg. We've been, you know, voluntarily, I've put this in his hands and said, you know, just tell me what you want me to do, I'll do it. Whatever we need to do, we'll get it done.
TJ, I know the assessor's office been out there, I bet you 10 times, 12 times since the 1990s, is there anything? And I understand, talking to Devert, that there's a lot of notes on it over the years and so forth.
Yeah, I remember the old homeowner, he was, yeah, that was interesting.
Anybody from the board get any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Anybody else, anything else you want to add?
Well, just to clarify, it does, from the outside, I'm sure you said that you saw the pictures, there are several rooms that are completely finished. So there's a couple bedrooms that are 100% finished, there's two bathrooms that are finished, there's, there's a living room that's 100% finished, there's livable space in the house.
So you are, you're living there now?
Correct, we have been since September.
Okay.
So, because we thought that that was our legal right. Like, I didn't know, we had no idea that there was no occupancy permit. We would have obviously done things a little differently, but we just tried to comply as closely as we could to what we knew.
Okay. Greg, anything else you want to add before the board?
Mike, you as well, anything else?
Only, the only thing I'd add is that the, the resolution was for 30 days after being given this punch list of life safety items, to have those items completed. Greg, do you have any problem with getting that punch list created here within the next day or two?
I know.
All right, so yeah, we should be good for 30 days from this resolution being approved.
Anybody else? Do you have a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes, okay, motion did carry. Greg, why don't you keep the board updated after 30 days? Let us know where it's at. Okay, we are going to go into our work sessions. I'll jump real quick to any reports or information from the board.
Just like to send out our condolences to the James Kramer family dying. He's one of the maintenance guys here at the courthouse, over at the jail, but he lost his father last weekend, so our prayers go out to him.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll go into discussion possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the FY '20 budget. So you can stay for the budget. If you're not interested, then now would be the time to duck out.
With the requests that have been submitted so far from the departments, my initial estimates, and I'm going to be referring to some charts on the, the handout that I gave you with the multicolored table at the top, and also the handout that says tax rates and impact on taxes.
So these graphs are going to show what you currently have for a budget without the board doing anything?
Right, and I'm going to talk about some of the assumptions that are in there. So, so the top graph here shows our urban, countywide tax levy trend without the radio debt. And you can see that FY '16, '17, and '18, we were remaining fairly level at around 6.18 for the tax rate. We had an increase in FY '19 due to Country View. We had to include Country View in our budget last year. So it was my hope in starting to look at this that with the, with the taxable valuation growth that we had, 4.3%, that we would be able to return to the level that we were at prior to FY '19. And it looks like, based on initial estimates, that we will be able to do that or kind of achieve that, going back down to right now, with some adjustments, I have an estimate of around the 6.17. This is without the radio debt in there, because it, the radio debt kind of altered it a little bit.
So that 6.17, is it the radio?
That doesn't include the radio debt in this graph. And I'll, I'll show you, I've got the other graphs that do include the radio, so you can see the actual numbers. But eliminating the radio so that we were just looking at everything else being consistent and understanding that in FY '19, that 6.45 included Country View. We basically ended up taxing for 2 million last year for Country View, or 1.5 million. We had 2 million that we included, we used, we ended up using 500,000 in our debt service reserves so that we could reduce that tax a little bit. So it was overall basically a 1.5 increase. But the graph below that shows our rural tax levy trend, and you can see that from FY '16, it's been on a, a pretty good increase. And we talked a little bit about that. My concern is that the patrol salary and benefits, which make up the largest part of that expenditures that we put in the rural fund, the growth in that just outpaces the growth in the taxable valuation. And so this table, this multicolored table, when I first started putting everything together, and I just kind of want to go over this, over here, the first column, this is what FY '19 would have looked like without the 1.5 million for Country View. I took those adjustments out, and so that's kind of what it would have looked like. FY '19, this is where we actually were. The urban rate was 6.69, the rural rate was 3.50, basically. So when I initially put in our requests, and I made some adjustments to the capital, and I'll talk about that, but we were looking at, and this is with where, how we've always been doing it, with, we have the sheriff patrol and salary and benefits in the rural, but we also have been putting the allocation for consolidated dispatch into the general fund. So based on those estimates of what we currently have been doing, we would be looking at a decrease in the urban, down to 6.33, 5.4% decrease, but an increase in the rural of 11.9, which is pretty.
With the volume of calls that they experience, it's, dispatch is a great clearinghouse. So Waterloo has taken action to minimize the calls for service. So a more equitable means, you know, Susan, later she's going to talk about the capital budget for the county, and we have a lot of fluctuations in the capital budget. She's trying to stabilize that. Consolidated dispatch is in the process of trying to do the same thing, because there have been fluctuations in calls for service for different entities, and so the amount that each city pays could be significantly different each and every year. So they're coming up with a better way to not have that fluctuation. I like Susan's approach to this.
If it goes into the?
Here, let, here, let me pull up, this will help, hold on one moment.
So right now, it's, it's paid by usage, correct?
Right.
It is, so each, let me pull this up, and this is what came up at the emergency management. Oh, there's the sheriff.
The biggest problem right now is the cities are being double taxed.
Right.
In the general fund, the cities are taxing for their share, and the county is taxing the cities for our share. And in the rural basic, then the rural calls are only being taxed through the rural side.
So nobody will be paying usage then anymore? It'll just be coming out of the rural fund?
The rural will be paying for the county's share.
Oh, just the county?
Correct.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right now, the cities and the rural is paying for the county's share. And so it's kind of a double taxation for the municipalities.
At one time, and I don't know if you're there now, Tony, one time I thought county was like 6, 7% of usage.
That's about where we're at.
Compared to the Waterloo's and Cedar Falls, where the majority of 70%.
Right, that's about where we're at.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you're only talking about our portion and?
Correct, correct.
Right, so, so this is what we looked at, at EMA. So this line here, the FY '19 consolidated contribution, so each of the cities and the county gets allocated a portion of, of the dispatch budget. And in '19, it was 200, approximately 231,000 for us. So Waterloo's was like almost 1.3, Cedar Falls was 417, et cetera. So each city puts that amount into their budget. And we put the 231 into our budget, but we've been putting it, it's been in the sheriff's budget under the general fund. And it, it really is a cost associated with the rural usage, and so, because every other city allocates their amount in their budget, and so because of the way we've been putting it in our budget, we're, we're double taxing. They're, you know, so the city residents are paying the tax based on the city's allocated portion, plus the amount based on the county's allocated portion. Does that make sense?
And we've talked about it in previous years, I just don't think we've ever taken this much of an approach.
No, I understand, and I think it makes sense, but that scenario that you said where they're getting double taxed, it currently exists in quite a few areas right now.
Yes.
The city passed water, stormwater charge to the county. We weren't exempt, so therefore we got to tax for it, and they're getting, they're going to get it in Waterloo, there's double. They also created the utility tax, or whatever you want to call it. We never paid that before. We do now, so, I mean, it exists in other areas.
Well, with, what I'm seeing with this approach is, you know, some might call it a shell game, because the fund's not really shifting that much. City residents are still going to be, but I like the justification better. City residents are still going to be paying a dollar amount that's equal to what they've been paying in the past, but I like how it's broken up, because it's true, the sheriff's department is here in the city of Waterloo, so even as they're coming and going, there's a, that's a presence. They do assist the municipalities on many calls, so I think this is broken up more fair, and fairness, I've, people have heard me say it before, fairness is a matter of perception. To me, this seems, as I'm looking at this, I can say, I can justify this.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's, the only thing, now we're going to reduce, we're going, what, 75% salary staying in there or?
So.
We're going to pull?
Right, so the table up here, I was playing with different options. And, right, so the first box, the blue box, is the way we've always done it, leaving consolidated in the general fund, leaving all of the sheriff patrol and salary and benefits in the rural fund. But the increase in the rural tax then was pretty significant, and, and it's been going up, as you can see in the table, the chart above. And so I guess it depends on where you feel comfortable. There really isn't much we can do about sheriff patrol salary and benefits unless we're going to cut staff there, you know. So, so then I wanted to look at some other options, and so it was brought up that, you know, maybe consolidated dispatch should more appropriately be in the rural fund, that amount. That's about 239,000, I believe, this year. So in the green box, not doing anything with patrol, but just moving consolidated dispatch in there, then we're looking at a 19.6% increase.
Sure.
And, and that's because the, the rural valuation, you know, isn't as high, and so when you, when you put expenditures in there, you're, you're really increasing that rate more. Um, so then, talking to the sheriff, we talked about some various allocations between, um, general fund and, and rural fund, um, based on work that was done, you know, to assist cities and, and in the urban areas, um, and we talked about eighty percent or seventy-five percent, and so that's the two boxes here, and I guess just, you know, looking at everything, um, when I put it all together, I, I kind of thought the seventy-five percent, um, looked like the best option, but I mean, that's totally up to the board, so.
Tony, the, the, the spread on the wages moving all around, you think that's consistently, I mean, you have somewhat turnover in the sheriff's department, so you got, uh, salaries not quite as high as a, a veteran deputy, but yet it looks like they keep going up.
Well, the more veteran deputies end up on the road.
I was just ready to ask you, that's probably where they go then.
Most, uh, most of them, that's where they aspire to be, and that's where they end up retiring out of, so, um, and when we started talking about what would, would be a fair allocation, when you think about the Gilbertgills, the Dunkertons, uh, we are their patrol when they're not working, so they have one or two staff members that, uh, that serve that community, they don't work twenty-four seven, so when a call comes in and they're not there, we are their patrol response, uh, we do back up Cedar Falls, Waterloo, uh, on calls. Most of our mental health calls, uh, emergency committals, things of that nature, are not out in the rural county, uh, they're in other municipalities, and mostly in Waterloo, so, um, I think that, uh, twenty-five to thirty percent timeframe, uh, uh, i- is pretty fair, uh, twenty to twenty-five i- is, is pretty accurate, and it seems like it makes some good sense from an equitable, uh, standpoint.
We can try it this year.
You were just trying to push it up to thirty.
Well, I, I mention that only because I'm looking at you when I say it, but, but, yeah, no, I think, I think it makes some sense, and it is, uh, it is what it is, especially when we recognize that salaries don't tend to keep pace with, uh-
Yeah.
-with where we're at, so, yeah, it seems fair.
Again, something you look at annually, I mean, you can, if you see the changes.
Right, I mean, we can continue to look at this and, um, but, uh, I just thought it was something that we needed to, to think about this year.
Maureen, you got any?
Yeah, no, I, I think that seventy-five percent seems the way to go.
I, I, I agree. I think we're there on this part.
Okay. Um, so, so moving on down, so this is, uh, so this is where, what we're looking at then, um, with our initial estimates, and, and we still have some, quite a few decisions to make, so, um-
Amen to that one.
Yeah, so, but based on that, uh, those initial estimates, the tax rate, um, this is just sort of what we, we would be looking at as an, um, increase and decrease, uh, on the actual taxes, uh, based on a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, um, in the, for residential properties in incorporated areas, um, and, and this is impacted by the rollback, and the residential rollback, uh, for FY twenty is two point three percent higher than FY nineteen, uh, slightly lower than FY eighteen, and so, uh, we are looking at, um, the tax, uh, going down, and this is, it would be less than in FY eighteen, but three sixty-two eighty-four, um, and that's just sort of the initial estimate. And then, uh, residential properties in the rural area, whoops, sorry, yeah. Uh, on the top there, um, would be just a slight decrease, and, and this is, this is the urban and rural, uh, rate combined, um, the rate, uh, estimated to decrease by two point three eight percent, but be, due to the residential rollback increase, um, that the taxes would, would almost remain flat. Um, and then on ag property, um, whoops, sorry. Um, ag property, um, that, the rollback on agricultural property increased by, uh, three percent, and so, uh, even though there was a decrease, uh, in the tax rate, the overall tax rate, it would, uh, taxes would go up slightly, um, on ag property. So that's kind of the, the initial picture, um, and now, if you wanna move to the, uh, the second page on that handout with the multicolored, um, um, table, okay. So, as I mentioned, I have a few assumptions that are, that are built into these numbers, uh, but as we were going through the department budgets, uh, there were several changes, um, and, um, from the prior year, and so we can go over those if you like, these are other than capital, 'cause we're gonna deal with capital separately, um, so if we wanna start going down this list, if you wanna do it that way, uh, we could do that, um, because then we're also gonna talk about salaries and benefits, um, separately, so, I guess, do we wanna talk about some of these changes first? Okay, so, and I, let me just pull up the, uh, the, uh, the departments here, so, kind of go down that list. Let me find my right. Okay, so board office, we didn't have any changes, uh, auditor's office, there were no changes, really. Um, I'm gonna skip over sheriff for a minute, I'm gonna go to the treasurer's office, so the treasurer's office, uh, was requesting an additional office specialist position, uh, and as noted in your handout, um, that position, salary and benefits, it's, uh, approximately sixty-four thousand eight twenty-three.
Yeah, absolutely. Is that really the only major change?
In the treasurer's department, yeah, I mean, they had an increase in revenue, uh, due to, um, an increase in interest, um, but their operating expenditures were the same, and so, um, this was one of the items in the treasurer's office that was, uh, a change. I, and I don't know if you just wanna, if you wanna make any decisions now on those, or?
Well, we're gonna make decisions sometime.
I know, so, I guess that's, I'm opening it up for your discussion, and I think Rita's here, I don't, you know, if you have more.
Well, you know, and, I don't, I think all the departments honestly could always use more people, and they got a good argument, or could have a good argument, and I think we could have a good argument on why not, so, I mean, I guess it's just, you know, what I heard from Rita the first time around was anticipation work, it's not here, she don't know how much it's gonna be involved and so forth, so I think that's a little premature, I'm thinking about, uh, putting a person in there right now. I thought I heard, you know, one of her reasons that the interest rates was up, no, did I hear that, or, we were getting more revenue off interest?
Yes.
Then again, that, that doesn't have anything do anything, 'cause that's countywide, and we suffered when it was at its all-time low, and we're just barely dragging ourselves back up, and the reason we get, getting there is because we made cuts in the past, so, I, I don't know if I could support your request, Rita, on a person at this time.
Okay, well, I mean, is that the consensus?
I'd like to hear from Rita again, on it, if you-
Review that, so, Rita.
Thank you.
And what you're do, are you, you've got a couple people working on it already, right?
Say it again.
You have a couple people working on it already, right?
Right, right, and, and I reached out to the, um, uh, group that was working with the, um, they call it ERT, it's electronic, uh, registration and titling, through the dealers, uh, as to what their plan of action's going to be in the future. Right now, they're just, uh, working with two dealers from Polk County for new, and they said that this spring, and so I would foresee within the next few months, they are going to open it up to over three hundred dealers for new car only. Then later in the, um, summertime, they're going to, uh, include the, um, used car dealers and ha- have that added, so, we're kind of going to see possibly an influx here with, uh, this nineteen, and also going into twenty. I totally understand where, uh, Tom's coming from with all the, with the, um, increase with the, um, interest rates and that, uh, we've always been, prior to me becoming treasurer, we lost four people in the office due to budget cuts, uh, and we've been doing, I think, a great job keeping crossroads open in downtown. We're always missing a person at the front line, that, that's my key issue, and if this, uh, ERT, uh, does take hold here within the next few months, it's a process that is easier for dealers, uh, but it's gonna be more, uh, lengthy process in the office because of the, kind of the handling of it online, taking more steps than if they would just bring the paperwork in. But, uh, it's a way of the future, and it's the betterment for the public and also for the dealers, so that's the flow that it's going to. With that, uh, we will probably be pulling, uh, individual, right now, we have two supervisors working on it, uh, but I don't want that to be a continuous thing, I want the staff to do it, because it is, uh, uh, staff work, and, uh, with doing that, we may be pulling a couple people off to train and, um, uh, working with each other on that, um, dealer as it gets up and going. With that, um, I already have a space missing on the front line with, uh, with helping the public with their transactions they have, whether it's taxes, or car, or renewals, so I'm already lacking a space, but, uh, we're doing the best we can, and I understand totally, uh, I haven't approached about a new employee for, uh, these years, because interest rates are low, everything is in a funk, you know, so, uh, at this point, that's why I just brought it up, and whatever your decision is, whether it's this year, or I pre, uh, come to you, um, to you next year, um, it's, it's in your hands, but that's where we're kinda at, it's going to probably take a person from the front line, and we're already short, and trying to cre- keep crossroads open, um, that's been a huge benefit, uh, with the, um, uh, amount of people, they get twenty-five, thirty thousand people out there for the year, just for two people, and they average a hundred to, plus, a day of individuals they help, and the DOT loves us out there, because they have people from out of state, out of country come in, and then they can go over and ask, uh, for the, um, help from us as to how to bring their cars in and that, so, it's, uh, kind of a win-win situation, so I do, do plan on keeping crossroads open, but the public has to understand that, uh, with that, we do have a, um, a limited, um, uh, staff for downtown sometimes, so, that's where we do cross, close crossroads when needed, but, uh, overall, I think staff does a great job, and I totally understand where you guys are coming from, so, uh, again, I'm just, uh, kinda pleading that there is a good change taking place in the offices, not just our office, but all ninety-nine counties, so, uh, I'm just kinda looking ahead to help buffer that, uh, with trying to get another employee back.
I think timing was something that we looked at, was the, not knowing the time before.
Right, right, and, and I, and that's about the best that they could give me, they said the spring, it was supposed to be up and going by, uh, the end of last year, uh, but they are hitting some glitches, you know, that payment online, the ACHs and that, uh, the problems are coming in, and they're not, uh, calculated correctly, along with the paperwork not being signed correctly, or the proper chain of dealers and that, uh, so, uh, they're finding some glitches, but they're trying to fine-tune, the DOT is trying to fine-tune that, so when they do roll over, because once you bring in all the dealers, it's gonna be, uh, uh, more of a, um, you can control it with two, when you get three hundred plus, and then when you go to the used cars, so, right now, uh, they're trying to fine-tune that, but it's, it's getting close, uh, but they couldn't give me any deadline.
You mentioned too about taking some supervisors, we're helping do it now, and, and really not like to have them doing that.
Well, yeah, they have other work that they need to do, and, and it does sidetrack that, uh, work that they have, and so, and it is, uh, work that the staff should be doing, and I don't wanna have any conflicts that way, where supervisors taking over work that should be the employees doing, and, and it's just that, it's not, dealer work is still dealer work, it's just that it's another format of doing it, it's just gonna be a more timely, uh, process, uh, handling it, because if you come in with your paperwork, we do it right away, and we can look at tangible, answer quite, right away, now it goes through a whole nother process, and not all dealers are gonna sign on to this, because there is a, I think, a fee to that, uh, but there's huge interest, because it saves on their side, their clerks can send it electronically, they don't have to mail it, they don't have this lost in the mail, uh, it's, it's advantageous for the dealers to get into it, and so that's why there's been a push for that, so, uh, with that, the treasurer's office have to kinda take the brunt of it, and, and it's just the way technology is going.
How many employees you have in your office?
There's eighteen total.
How many supervisors?
Uh, in title and registration, I have, uh-
Total, the whole department?
Total supervisors is five.
Five.
And will the state collect the entirety of that fee?
Say it again.
I assume the state collects and keeps the entirety of that fee.
Well, we get, like, uh, for tax, the, the first time registration tax, or what we called use tax years ago, uh, we get a dollar, so if you buy a fifty thousand dollar car, we get a dollar out of that, uh, tax, uh, we do get, um-
But for the new fee that the dealers will pay for using the service?
Fees are being paid not to the counties, that's going through the DOT, so we're not getting that, the state is, so, um, so it, it's just something new, and I just, uh, wanna get to a point where we're short-staffing the public that we have stand in line, because we still do that, we still have the tax, we still have the renewals, we still have the car renewal, uh, transfers, and so it's, uh, uh, it, it's great for those that never wanna come downtown to have their work done, and, and a lot of them don't, they don't even know where we exist, but, uh, for those that still do, we still need to have the staff to be able to wait on them too, so.
You actually move people through very quickly, I think, I think people comment.
We try, we, we, we do our best, and, and the staff is, uh, spot on, it, you know, I, I, I can't, um, and the, the work isn't me, it's the staff, so, uh, with them, I think that, uh, they do a tremendous job, and, uh, they keep busy, and, um, really, uh, we got a good nucleus down there.
Yeah, I've noticed at tax time, you don't see the lines nearly as long as they used to be.
Yeah, we, we cross-trained where they can do the tax and auto, uh, with the new tax system coming in with Tyler, they're going to be cashiering out, which is another step that we don't do right now at the front line, uh, and so it's gonna be another, uh, learning process for them, uh, next year, when we go, uh, live with Tyler, but, uh, everybody's kinda on board, and a lot of them are looking forward to it, and some are hesitant, but it'll be good.
Any thoughts, Rita, on a part-time position?
No, we have no part.
Being a, I'm, uh, being someone, uh, that could help assist you, like during maybe some peak times, or this position, or others?
Years ago, we had co-op and that come in, uh, I, I, we talked about it downstairs, we just don't really have hard-time positions, uh, there's times that, uh, during the summer, especially when people wanna go on vacations, that's where we're really, get hit with shortages of staff, and everybody has that in all the offices, so I'm not saying anything new, um, but, um, we have some that have retired, and they would've loved to have come back part-time in the summertime, not in the winter, because part of it was, uh, winter travel, they didn't wanna drive, so if that would be a, a possibility of even having, uh, those that would retire, want not to completely retire and do part-time, you know, that's a, a possible thing too, a possible thing. Times, things change, and, and, um, uh, they'd have to get on top of that as far as law changes and that, but that should be simply not, if they agree to it, um, but, uh, again, that's something that we haven't had part-time for years.
Key board, anybody else? It's your pleasure.
I support this position.
I support it.
Was that in form of a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
I think we already got a motion to second. Just wanna keep in mind, as we go through these budgets, you saw that number up there, if you're comfortable with that number, then we can forego all this and move on, otherwise, to get that number down, you're gonna have to start moving something.
And I just wanted to reaffirm that, that number presented includes these assumptions.
Um, ye- yes, so, the number presented does include this position, there are some more items on here that it doesn't include, and so, um, and I can let you know on each of that. Um, I also just wanna mention that, you know, and especially after we talk about capital, um, this year might be a little unique, we, we have some options, some flexibility to, um, to do some things to kind of get us to a number that we want, um, and, and I can talk about that more when we get to the capital, but, uh, you know, i- if you want to identify the things that you would like to have included, um, just so I can have a firmer, you know, that I can come back Thursday with a more firm picture, and then if you decide at that time, no, you know, I wanna, you know, let's take that out, that's totally fine too, so if we wanna do like a consensus here, and I can include this, if, if there's a consensus, and then, you know, if you decide on Thursday to, to take it out, we can do that.
I have a question for you too, um, is this something like, if, if the- Is this something like if, if the timeline didn't work for Rita, if things don't fall into place for this person to be on board, rather than thinking, okay, we hire a new person?
Yeah, so before we would do this, it would come to the board as an action to, you know, how they typically in HR bring a personnel request, you know, to hire, and so the board can decide at that time not to do it, if you have more information later, or if something changes, you know.
Well, I did, we talked a little bit about looking at, not necessarily lean process, but looking at how the, you know, not that it doesn't operate well, Rita, but just taking a look at if there is another option or something else to do to make it within staff doable, I don't know. But yeah, we have time between now and July 1st. I just wondered if there's something that we could do to, not today.
But you can bet if that's in this budget FY '20, it's going to be filled July 1st.
No, no, not necessarily. It would have, it'd still have to come, is that correct?
Well, I understand they all come before the board, but that will be filled in July 1st. Because the argument then is going to be it's in the budget, and I do have the work for it, so. So anyway, do you want to take any individual action on this, or you're-
I guess what I'm thinking, for these items, if we could just get some consensus on whether we include it or not at this time.
Come back Thursday and look if you'll-
Include it right now?
All right, that sounds good.
Okay. And on this list, these are the items where the departments had either a change in position or FTE that they were looking at, or there was some change in operating expenditures from the prior year that was a little more unique. So the next one, and I'm going to skip IT restructuring at the moment, and just talk about their operating expenditures. And up on the screen, I have the table of, this is just operating expenditures, and it kind of gives you the history. But you can see in FY '20, the overall operating expenditures in the IT budget, there's a decrease of 2,900. That's because there were elimination of some services and some things. But, oh, Kim's here. But Kim did have increases for the backup internet and the connection to Hartman. And so I just want to, I think she wants to make sure that you want to move forward with those two items, and I can let Kim-
She also had a person in there too, didn't she?
Well, I just wanted to talk about operating expenditures first, so.
So the two things that I did add were the fiber connection between here and Hartman for that disaster recovery change, if we decided to do that. And then there was another change for having that redundant internet service provider, so that if our connection with CFU went down, we would still be able to access the internet. So those were both in utilities, and I think one was 600 and the other one was 650 a month.
A month. And so those are included in this number. Her total operating expenditures were 5, 24, 750, which is a decrease from the prior year of 2,900. So it would be an even larger decrease if you decided you didn't want to go ahead with those two items that she mentioned.
Well, Kim, that backup internet too, that redundancy, having redundancy is obviously very important, but I was going to say too, is this with a flip of a switch type of thing? So we have no downtime?
There would be a little bit, but it wouldn't be nearly what it would be if we had, if CFU was down, we'd be down until they actually cut over. There would be some adjustment to get it connected to the firewall, but it wouldn't, I mean, it'd be very slight. I mean, I can find out exactly how long it should take, but we'd be prepared for it at least at that point.
So our dual would be that we'd have CFU as the backup, so they'd have to be down and us down at the same time?
Yeah. CFU would have to be down before the United Private Network would kick in.
And Kim, could you explain the benefits of the connection to Hartman again? I think I have it, but I-
Okay. So the facility at Hartman Reserve is further away, so if there was a weather-related incident, we might just as well be connected. I mean, Pinecrest might go at the same time. The other thing is the security system out there, they already have a firewall in place, so that would be something that we would need to add to the Pinecrest location. If this system, if this was down, the other place I would be putting money in is to get some other internet provider to go to, I looked at MediaCom to go to Pinecrest. So that kind of takes care of that. So that's kind of a flip, but the firewall is definitely part of the piece too.
What's it cost to put a firewall in on it, Pinecrest?
Well, what we do right now is that we lease those so that there's a hot fix, so it's like $299 a month for what we have here. But that is part of our ACES contract, so it's not a separate fee. The other thing is, the security system out there is, you know, pretty advanced. I can address that. There's a nice, you know, the area upstairs, if we did have to have people working there for a while, would be a nice, and it's got the same wireless access points in that building that we do here at the courthouse.
So the comment here that says, no, the IT has an overall decrease in operating expenditures, is that would be because of the changes made at Pinecrest, not utilizing Pinecrest?
Part of the deal with that is the AS400 that we have was so old that I was having to pay a higher maintenance fee to keep that going, when I actually replaced it with a newer model. That went down considerably.
And then there was the elimination of the service that, for time sheets at-
Yes, the, what we're doing for the Health Department, Time Management Service, I have a monthly fee, and that's not after this month or next month, that'll be-
They're going to go on the E-suite system.
I think both of these seem to make sense in increasing our ability to handle emergencies.
I agree.
Okay. So then the, and the other item in IT, now in the current numbers, I only have Kim's current staff salary and benefits. But as Kim discussed, you know, there are some issues with staffing, and she is looking at various options. And so if we want to include anything in the budget for that, we'll have to determine what that is for next year and what we want to include, so.
It's not in there now?
It's not in there now, so.
And we don't know what you want, or do you know what you want?
Well, on the documentation I sent to you, I had a list of the positions that, long-term, I would like. I'd at least like to have-
Is that getting rid of ACES then?
That's, we'd have to work through that. So if you gave me everybody on that list, we'd wean ourselves off of ACES.
And again-
We've been kicking the can down the road for two years now with ACES, and we're just going to continue to do that unless we either wean ourselves or give ACES complete control here.
Well, I've asked for positions the last two years too, so if I don't have the people to take care of the, you know, to do the work, we have to rely on ACES.
There was a suggestion at the last budget meeting that the county has a firm come in and do consultant on the IT department to tell the board exactly if we have proper staffing now, or if we need people trained in different areas and so forth. And I think that's what we're going to have to do before we can move on with anything.
Yeah, yeah, we can't go on unknowns.
And we could possibly do that this year, I mean, not have to wait until July 1? I was going to say, is that something-
Oh, yeah, we could do that. We can draw out of the boardroom.
So I guess my question, and not knowing, you know, what you want to do, do you want to include, you know, X amount, you know, for the potential of new positions? Or would we be looking at, if we didn't include anything in the budget, any new positions that you decided you wanted to add in FY '20 would end up coming out of reserves? Or if we had budget savings, which we typically do, you know, we could absorb it that way?
I'd rather see it through reserves, or there's a possibility, if we did fill that position, that we would lose the contract of ACES, which is how much?
Well, the thing I would, I would mention though, is we need to make sure that we have that transfer of knowledge well in hand before we eliminate that contract. And you might be able to find that, well, it's $19,000 a month is what it ends up being.
I think you talked about it, yeah, not a long transition time, but there still needed to be that time where you felt comfortable with everybody.
Right. Well, and the other thing I would say, and I think I put that in my little presentation too, is no matter who we hire, they're not going to have every skill set. So it's very likely that we'd have projects that we needed to hire an outside vendor, and ACES would be, you know, inappropriate since they're familiar with our system. If it's new technology or a major upgrade, we'd probably still-
I'd rather hear that from the guy that's going to come in and take a look at this rather than hearsay.
I think it's not only hiring somebody if that's what we're going to do, but I think it's also retraining the current staff.
That's true.
Where that's at, I don't have a clue. That's why I think it's important that we bring somebody in, analyze that department and let us know.
Skill set that they got and what we need.
I know Linda asked if that can be done before July 1st. Of course it can.
I know it can, but I just meant if everybody's-
We can start the process as soon as we can find somebody and then go from there.
Yes.
That's what I'd like to see done.
So is the consensus now to leave it out right now for the budget, and we'll cover it through possible savings or some other?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the other two items, I think the board has come to the agreement on that. It'd be nice to try to get some decisions here, Susan, rather than revisiting all these again Thursday, when we've probably got more things to do.
Well, I mean-
Like, for instance, the, what was the last one we had, the treasurer? The only thing in question is a position. So if the majority of the board said they want that position, then I don't know what more discussion you want to have on it.
I'm not necessarily saying we're going to discuss it again on Thursday, I guess. After I, you know, some of these things are already in the numbers, some of them aren't, and, you know, if we go through and there's a consensus whether it should be included or not, and I come back then with a more final number for you, and if for some reason you don't like that number, you wanted to make a change at that time, I guess.
But Rita, is this currently in the-
It's currently in, and there seemed to be consensus that you wanted to leave it in, so I'm leaving that in. I'm leaving in the IT operating expenditures. Okay, the next item, well, I'm going to go down, this is the list, Tom, on the sheet I gave you. The next item in question is in the Maintenance Department. Right now, I have all of the positions in there, and the question just is to retain the position that was formerly placed out at Country View. It's currently in Rory's budget, always been in the Maintenance budget, but just want to make sure that that is-
This is the salary that was covered by Country View?
Yes.
I'm in favor of keeping it in the budget.
We're going to have Rory present again, or he was going to be needing to do some different thing at his-
He's here, I don't know if he will.
Again, I think Rory can present a good case on why he needs this individual. Since he was a maintenance person, he was probably here at one time. We were paying the salary, and then when we went to an enterprise out there situation, that's when they started to pick up the salary.
Right, and like, I guess, go back, I didn't hear what you said, Linda.
What, no, I was, I knew your budget, we were talking about that one day, and I said-
I didn't know if you had a question, okay.
No, and so I just thought, regarding this and the work that would be done, that type of thing.
Well, like I had indicated last week, yeah, that's absolutely correct. Back in 2012, or 11, I believe it was, when Country View went into, took on an enterprise, am I calling it correctly, enterprise funding. At that time, I had met with the Finance Director, and the decision was made that beings that they were separated somewhat from the county, that we start charging them back for our services, not only for this particular position, but any of our staff that would happen to go out to that site. And so we kept track of time spent at Country View and charged them back for those services. But with that said also, this always has been a position with this department. We've utilized this position several times throughout the years, when we get ourselves in a situation where the need arises for additional staff. And we find ourselves in that situation quite often. And so, Tom, you nailed it, when, you know, you, I could justify several people, this is retaining a position, we're not asking to get another position, we're just asking to stay status quo, because I do truly feel that this is needed, this is much needed.
But keep in mind, we filled another spot last year full-time that was part-time, which didn't exist the year before that.
Just the year before that, but it did exist up until that. We had, for 30-plus years, we had that position. We took a year off, because as everybody probably knows, for those 30 years, that particular position, we struggled with it.
It was non-existent.
Yeah, we didn't get what we were hoping to get out of that. So we did take a year off to kind of evaluate primarily what services were out there that we could bring back in-house that made sense to help justify that position. And I think we've done a very good job of that, not to mention our county properties that flood-by-out properties. It seems like the trend is there, less and less of them are being leased, and consequently, we have to maintain those as well.
Do you really mow them what, twice a year?
Pardon me?
Twice a year?
Uh, no, no, we do them more often. We don't do them near as much as the properties in town, but I would say a safe number might be once a month, depending.
In a rural area?
Yeah, depending, it really does depend though, what that year's like. I mean, we've had some years where, you know, our mowing has been significantly down, if it's dry or what have you. I think last year was actually a pretty busy year for us with the mowing. So I think we justified that position. We started off as part-time, we did put that into full-time, and I think that has been proven, that that position stays very busy. I'll, you know, again, the example I gave the last time with my staff, you know, I have the five maintenance staff, and that does include the position from Country View, without that position would be four, and then along with our property assistant. There isn't a given week where we don't have somebody out of our office, whether it's for uncontrollable events or what have you, if it's vacation. We have a combined amount of service of about 14 to 15 years, when you look at that small number of people. And so what that tells us, obviously, is there is a pretty large amount of vacation time, comp time, and those types of benefits as well, that puts us in a situation where we are short much of the time.
So that's currently in there, Susan, this one?
Yes.
Board, you got any questions on this one?
No.
The argument could go the other way, Rory, and I understand where you're coming from, is last 10 years, we have pumped millions and millions of dollars into our infrastructure that before was taking a lot of wrenching time, and now it isn't. So you could have an argument the other way too, but I know you're still-
Well, there's a lot of aesthetic stuff that's been-
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, we've increased the infrastructure.
And we have, and that's, you know, I've got a whole report of all the projects that have been done, and I think as a group, you know, board supervisors, our staff, what have you, we've made huge improvements to our facilities, especially here in the last 10, 15 years. But with those improvements, it takes a lot of time from our staff, because even, like I indicated last week, even when we outsource these projects, that's still very involved with our staff. We still, even though there might be a subcontractor here, it still requires our involvement as a staff to help oversee that project. So yes, we are making improvements, but we have ways to go. Our mission is to keep our buildings safe, keep them efficient, and keep looking for ways to save the county money, and I think that's been proven over and over. As I had mentioned earlier on, when we were talking about renewable energy, you know, with these projects, we've reduced the carbon emissions by 15%, and that's just looking back three years. That's a pretty huge accomplishment, I feel, and that's majorly due to the upgrades and the changes that we've made to our facilities. And consequently, that comes out of our staff. The ingenuity from my staff, the skill sets that my staff have play a huge role in that, so.
Okay, board, does anybody disagree with that position, or?
No, and can I make a proposal to cut to the chase here? In regard to this list?
Yeah.
Social Services seems reasonable, the VA seems reasonable, Conservation seems reasonable. We've all been provided with information on these. In my opinion, I don't see where we need discussion on them. I think they're reasonable, I think they're worthy, I support them. I'd like to have discussion on the increase in credit loss security, the board agencies, and I know the sheriff wanted to take advantage of how we're positioned and-
Right.
Get in a position.
Yeah.
I think we should put that on the list and discuss it, unless it's coming down the road.
Right, I have two more. Yeah, so if everybody's okay with Social Services, the VA, we can kind of talk about when we talk about salaries, and Board Agencies, we can leave till a little later. I'd like to leave that one till a little later. So Conservation had that change, and if- So conservation had that change, and unless somebody has a question for Mike. Then after we had our departmental discussions, we had a couple of things come up. One of them is the increasing in courthouse security. This was sort of left off, forgotten about. But Rory had notified me a while ago that this contract is gonna come up for renewal in January of 2020. And the company that we currently are using has talked to him about looking at some significant increases in what we're paying. And I don't know if Rory wants to just briefly.
Rory, what?
Talk about that, but it's not included in our budget right now, so we need to add something.
What, what gave the idea of the increase? I mean, you don't normally bring that information to the table.
Yeah, I don't have that report in front of me, but I'll go off my memory. I did forward that to you, Susan, but it's been.
Usually about three percent each.
Yeah, it's actually quite significant, this go-around. And basically, what I'm being told from the company that's currently doing our court security, they're basing it off a average in this area. And so they look at other sites, other locations where they provide this service, and they look at the rates that the guards are making. And if I remember correctly, Susan, the rates that our security staff is being paid here is in.
Yeah, it was like ten to eleven, right?
That sounds familiar. I wish I had it in front of me.
I believe it's somewhere in the range of ten to eleven, and the average is around sixteen or something.
Because they're comparing to private businesses like John Deere, Target, and so forth, so there would be a difference. We bid that, we usually get at least three different vendors that usually bid on this.
I wanna say the last time we had at least three, if not maybe a couple of more than that.
Yeah, I, I'm confident if we bid this, it's not gonna be too far off from the past. Heck, half the time whoever gets it, they keep the same employees we got downstairs, they just hire them. So.
Do you have that report that you can put up, or that email, or?
I don't, I don't handy, I'd have to go looking for it.
Susan, I put three percent on that budgeted, and we'll go from there.
I think we're gonna be low, just based on the information that he.
But obviously, we're gonna bid it, right?
Oh, yeah, we bid everything. And that's part of the process, but he had a pretty good justification. He's bringing this to us, knowing that he's gonna be bidding on the same project, so he wouldn't tell us to anticipate an increase if he's gonna be part of the.
Is that the same one that was with the old company we used to have, and then he went with this company?
Yeah, and that's, that's pretty common.
And he's probably gonna flip back to the old company.
Could be, could be, I mean, we.
What was the cost, the significant increase?
Sixty percent, sounds like sixty percent.
Like fifty percent, yeah.
It was, it was quite significant.
Right.
Yeah, but out of the times that we've given increase in downstairs, them guards haven't seen any increase in their salaries.
I just wanna make sure that we're providing the board the information that's given to us. And this was given to us just as a, hey, here's a heads up, here's what the average.
But he is aware that we will bid it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I think three percent, and we'll deal with it at the time.
I'll make sure three percent's in there.
And we haven't received that email, have we?
That's normally what we put in every year anyways, around three percent.
Okay, so the other two items that came up, the sheriff sent you an email regarding a position. And then I also received an email from Brian. It's a current position that he has, but it's possibly in the wrong pay grade. So we might need to make an adjustment there, but I'll let the sheriff, if you wanna, you wanna talk about your position?
Are you going down the list here?
These two aren't on the list, and they kind of came up after, so I forgot to.
I think Rita started, she first requested her request, because every department adds to that.
We don't talk. Rita is not the trendsetter. No, mine actually came up last week when my staff brought me, my supervisory staff brought me this weird staffing model suggestion for the jail. And I said, what the hell is this? And it had to do with front-loading or actually over-staffing my Monday through Fridays with sworn staff. And I said, this looks like you're taking advantage of my civilian detention. It looks like you're treating my sworn staff better because it's more desirable to have Monday through Fridays with weekends off. I said, I won't buy it. And they said, you don't understand, we are constantly having problems, we're constantly stealing from other shifts. We're constantly borrowing bodies to cover for court. And I told you last week, and I told you in the annual report, that we have more forcible felonies than we've ever held. We've got more medical transports, we've got all these things that are taxing us more. And because I created these civilian detention officers, yes, we're saving money, but they can't do what a sworn officer can do. Without a gun, they can't do a transport. Without a gun, they can't come to court security, they can't do those kinds of things. And so those things that happen Monday through Friday traditionally, they can't do. So by create, when I created the civilian detention officer, I also created this four-man team that that's all they do, is court security, transports, extraditions. And I thought that would mitigate that, and it did, but what it actually did is it slowed down the bleed. And the bleed is becoming greater than I realized. So when they brought me this staffing model, right now, we bid twice a year per union contract for shift picks. And right now, they're bidding for March, they bid in March and September. And so when they brought this staffing model to me, I initially rejected it and said, this is not fair to the civilians. And then when they explained it to me and they started breaking down, we looked at week after week after week, how many times they've had to borrow people from other shifts to make my staffing work. It's my problem, it's a problem that I created for the jail when I started attridding sworn staff to replace them with civilians. So it became really real very quickly. We're gonna have to change our staffing model to more akin to what they've recommended. But the bigger and greater and longer-term fix, and the more efficient fix, is let me backfill another civilian, and let me slide, let me replace that civilian position, and move that deputy into a full-time utility squad position so that they are more ambidextrous, they are able to work court, they are able to do extraditions, they are able to do those transports full-time. And that additional body then becomes more gainfully employed doing the things that a sworn officer can do that a detention officer cannot. So what I'm asking for is the ability to utilize the more efficient, the less expensive body, and offset them by putting a sworn officer into that utility squad, upping the utility squad by one. And probably still having to change my staffing model slightly for those Monday through Friday staffs, and upping that staff, for sworn staffing for the time being as well. So it had nothing to do with Rita. It had to do with a problem that's been long in the making. And now, based on the paradigm that is facing us, and it looks like is going to continue to face us, we've got to, we've gotta change the way we're doing business, and it has to do with all the great time that we're, all the great money that we're saving by using civilians, but the fact that they cannot do what a sworn officer can do. And by creating this specialty team, they are there for that purpose. I just don't have enough of them to be able to make it work.
You got a chart for his salaries, the sheriff?
And, Tom, I think my response was a hundred thousand, I just factor that, but it's not even close to that, it's about seventy.
I do, yeah, it wouldn't be that.
No, I'm talking about overall.
So sheriff, when you first, when your staff first brought this model to you, you were somewhat skeptical, but once you studied it, you realized it's.
It's been a three-year problem, that I wasn't aware that they were robbing Peter to pay Paul as frequent as they were, and now it just continues to exacerbate. The more Waterloo PD keeps arresting people for shooting other people, the longer they stay in my jail, the worse the problem continues to get. Right now, we've got a female that we have to take to Iowa City every single day, and it takes two people to do that, every single day. So it's a, it's a, just, that's the cost of doing business in the Blackhawk County Jail. So that's one example of how we draw two people every single day out of our staff.
Susan, I was talking about the overall wages for the sheriff's budget for FY twenty?
Yes, well, let me bring up.
And I know over the three years that we've been attridding, we've saved that, but I know those savings go other places.
Okay, so total for sheriff, and this is split between general and rural, is twelve million, four eighty-nine, six ninety-two. This is the number right here.
That's the new one, FY twenty?
This is FY twenty.
Okay, and then do you show the previous years?
The previous year total, I have it split on here between.
I guess what I'm getting at, Tony, is your budget, you would've thought would've went down under wages. The more you flex to the civilians, which are getting paid less than the deputies. And I guess I'm asking, does that budget reflect that each year, or has it stayed pretty well even? Because obviously, they're not making as much, are they?
Correct.
All right, well, I said, all of my numbers are broken down between general and rural, but. So in the general fund, and this was before I shifted some of them to the rural, it was a three-point-six percent increase, which is lower compared to what the actual increases are going to be for, you know, deputies moving up the pay scale and so forth. And then in the rural, though, it's a little higher, only because those individuals are the higher paid. And they're the deputies, and they don't have the civilians and so forth. And so that's a nine-point-nine-eight percent is what we were looking at. I don't have the combined, I'd have to put that together.
Okay, has anybody else got any questions for the sheriff?
And the hundred thousand, I don't know, that's one of the additional, you haven't got that factored in?
I don't have this in here, but it wouldn't be a hundred, it would be less than that, so take a look at it. Would you like to add that in there?
Yes.
Board?
That consensus, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then the other change, and Brian can talk about it, I just received the email the other day, and it just sounds like that one of his staff people needs to get adjusted in their pay grade. And so I'll let Brian explain.
I wouldn't say that it's a wrong. What happened was, it is partly my fault, as we went through contract negotiations last Friday, I started to peruse a little bit the salaries, the projected salaries. Back before I started, immediately before I started, we had hired an attorney to do felony work, must have started at level one, or just level two. And has maintained that track along with everybody else who's hired with less experience in doing misdemeanor work. I think what I should've done when we lost one to the bench a year and a half ago, should've made that change then. I don't have my figures with me, I didn't know we were gonna address it. I simply sent Susan an email to see if I could make that cover. Ultimately, it's just a matter of, I wouldn't say wrong, but fairness, given the significant work that this employee has done, in line with the work of people doing much less work and making the same amount.
Did you go through HR with this, or?
No, this would've just been, this would've just been a bump, which is allowed by the collective bargaining agreement. My question to Susan.
Oh, this is in the bargaining agreement?
Oh, the ability for me to make bump with additional responsibility.
It didn't have to be negotiated, this new contract, you said the language exists right now?
I don't think you're talking about a compensation sheet.
No, no.
He's got, he can bring in an attorney at whatever step level he wants, he can also move them up if their work changes.
Yep, and my question for Susan is whether or not there was money there to.
Right.
What's the difference, you know?
Oh, probably six, I'd say probably six.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure that's okay, we can make that adjustment in the attorney's budget. It's not currently in here, so I can adjust that, that's. Okay, so I think that kind of covers everything except board agencies, which I'd like to leave until later. And so I wanna switch now to talk about the non-bargaining proposal that Debbie brought to you. And I'll let Debbie come up and talk about that.
Board, so first of all, I wanna just say thank you for the adjustments that you did make the last two years. We invested in, we had brought you some concerns with, after we looked at our state of where non-bargaining employees were. You made equity adjustments, I think of around sixty thousand the first year, and around twenty thousand last year. And so we had people that were literally making less also than people they were supervising. And so that picture has greatly improved, and I appreciate that you've made that investment in non-bargaining. I think that we wanna keep the momentum going, we wanna keep this improving, we're trying to do it as economically as we can. That's why I have, this year, I've actually, I'm hoping that this would be the last time that we would ask for the equity. We do need to keep a close eye on some of our mid-level management positions because they are supervising people who are also semi-professionals, and so those wages continue to encroach. So we just have to keep a close eye on that particular band of employees. So this year, I was just asking for, there's six people that I have identified as needing an equity adjustment, which is a little over thirty thousand. In addition to that, if we started moving people, not only with their annual cost of living, but if we would allow that merit, a small merit increase, that would get them moving in their ranges. And moving in their ranges should help keep them on pace so that we don't have to keep coming back and asking for equity increases.
So that's six people this year that you're requesting?
Six people.
How many of the six were on the list last year or the year before?
They weren't on the year, they weren't on the list.
Nobody was.
Once they get to midpoint, we're not.
So the six you got this year, they weren't on the last two equities?
No.
And you and Susan have significant discussions about this?
Yes.
Yes.
So the total above whatever you would put in your placeholder for across the boards, it's a little over sixty thousand dollars to really kind of bring these in line and get people actually moving again on their, we don't really wanna go back to a step system. We prefer this kind of a system. The old step system for non-bargaining was an eleven-step system, and they actually got like approximately a two-point-three percent step increase every year, along with the across-the-board. So, you know, having this kind of a system does give some flexibility when the department has our offering positions to managers. They can, you know, negotiate a little bit on the start salary.
You don't think the step system's better?
Not really. I think a merit step like this is better, and what I'd like to do is just start working on tweaking our policy to allow for merit increases. We could probably base it more on just criteria-based. So like if you're in your first quartile, and maybe because of your experience, you were hired at the lower quartile. As you progress and you're doing well, maybe that first quartile, you'd get a three percent increase the first year. And then maybe when you get to the second, we can slow you down a little to two percent like that. So eventually, then you could make that decision when people get to that fourth quartile, how much do you want them? Do you want them to top out, or do you want to just allow for, you know, exceptional performance at that point? Those are things that we could talk about, but I think the main thing, and my main objective is to keep ahead of compression, and also to keep people moving in there.
What's that mean when you say ahead of compression?
So compression is when you're supervising somebody and you wanna make, I mean, the bare minimum is five percent. You wanna make at least five percent more than the people that you're supervising. And we actually identified over the weekend two people that are right at that mark, that we, if we don't do something, and they're not actually included in this thirty-one thousand, I had them identified initially as, because they're at midpoint already, getting a one percent merit, which will improve them, and if they get a little merit every year, that should continue to improve. They actually are at the health department, and I don't know if Nefisa wants to talk, I didn't actually get a complete dollar figure. If I can come back with that on Thursday, if you'd like, see what it would cost to move those other two people that I saw that are at five percent. One of them's at, the other one that's at five percent is already in the equity, and that will take care of her, and that's not a problem. But the other two are still kind of in that iffy spot.
We're trying to keep people in pace with other people here in the county.
Right, keeping them in pace with people in their pay bands.
I think some of it is they're hiring them higher than what, when they're hiring somebody higher than what another person.
We try to be careful with that, right. If they have, it really depends on the experience. I mean, sometimes it's warranted, but at the end of the day, if you at least have people moving, like maybe I hired you because you have a lot of experience, and I hire a similar position with no experience, it makes sense. But you still want that person to be able to progress and eventually catch up.
Any other areas that this exists? I know it doesn't.
Yes, in the.
Sheriff's and the sergeants.
And I know that the, I actually met with Tony the other day with regard to this. The hourly sergeants are also having some compression, so we looked at a couple of different scenarios for them. Their first two steps are at a compression level now, and Tony is actually having trouble, and he can speak to this as well. But for people to actually test and to wanna move up to the sergeant.
We, when I say we, the county made some kind of adjustment on that a few years ago. We, um, when I say we, the county made some kind of adjustment on that a few years ago for the same reasoning. And I think that's the second time, the first time there was something, uh, was a one-time offer or something to the sergeants. And I don't know if that was in benefits or in, um, uh, salaries, but here, just in the last few years, did we make some kind of adjustment again?
I don't re, not since I've been back in human resources. The last one that I was aware of was...
Because people weren't going in because the pay was so close, and they were...
Tony, is he still here?
Yeah, I'll have to get Tony.
I'm sorry, that, I, I actually don't know that. I, the last time that I knew that the sergeants were adjusted was, uh, when June Watkins was the director, and she developed this new pay plan that they're on now. So, um, if they did, I'd have to research that. But that's why we do keep an eye on it, to make sure, uh, that we're, it's not...
And they're obviously non-bargaining.
They're non-bargaining as well, right, right.
Well, um, we don't get the sheriff back, we talked about that Thursday then?
Yeah, we can talk about that Thursday.
How many are we talking about?
For the sheriffs, there's fifteen.
Fifteen. And that number can change every day?
I think that they stay pretty steady with fifteen for the sergeants.
Now, what, Susan?
Well, we kind of need to, I would hope, make some decisions on the proposal that Debbie sent.
Could I address the board based on what they're discussing this time?
Sure, but I think their quest, I know what you're going to say, but I think the request should come from the sheriff. As a department head or elected official.
Just have a couple brief comments. First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak to them for a few minutes regarding the current pay scale for the sergeants. Uh, my name's Marty McDonald, Black Hawk County Sheriff's Office. Previously, the sergeants' wages were tied to the sheriff, since we were not allowed to be in the union. However, currently, a different pay scale, um, currently, we have a different pay scale for the non-bargaining. With the board of compensation making a recommendation for the sheriff and his command staff, and the teamsters negotiating for the civilians and deputies, we have, sergeants have fallen behind. As the sheriff mentioned to you last week, there are fewer and fewer deputies taking the promotional tests. There are many factors relating to this, some of which I have outlined, but most of them are out of your control. The one factor you can influence and control is the pay. I would like you to view this as not just a pay raise for the current sergeants, but also an investment in the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office is a paramilitary organization. As several of you know from serving in the military, sergeants are extremely important to an organization. You can have the best leader in the world, but without the sergeants, who are there day and night and weekends to follow through, to make sure the plans are carried out, and to mentor and grow the employees, things may not go according to plan. Most sergeants have been with the sheriff's office for over twenty years. There's a combined three hundred and fifty years of experience there, that averages out to about twenty-three years per sergeant. I've also looked at the Waterloo Police Sergeant's pay scale. I'm not asking for equal pay, but I think we should at least be in the same ballpark. I know usually, when pay is studied, you rely on similar-sized counties. However, I would argue, since we live in the same area, deal with the same people, pay the same taxes, or in the same tax base, uh, looking closer to home is a better comparison. Currently, a top Waterloo sergeant makes over fifteen thousand more than a Black Hawk County top sergeant. Uh, and my proposal was approved, a Waterloo police sergeant would still make almost ten thousand dollars more a year. In the end, it comes down to how much you value and appreciate the work we do. Thanks again for your careful consideration on this, and please feel free to ask me or any of the other sergeants any questions.
Is there, um, are you still tied by code to the sheriff's certain percent of salary?
No, that's why we're hourly, we used to be tied to his...
Okay, so, we used to be, but we're not anymore?
Correct.
That changed in the code or what?
No, it just, I think, um, maybe Debbie can speak on that, at one point, we were tied.
But now you're not?
Now, we're not.
Okay.
And I would like to take credit for the idea, but it wasn't my idea, I was just looking at revisiting what we were at before. And to answer your question before, uh, for quite a while, we've had fifteen sergeants.
Did we have some adjustment a few years ago, do you remember anything like that?
We did, we used to have more, actually, we used to have a major, they got rid of that position. We used to have five captains, now we're down to three. We used to have six lieutenants, now we're down to three lieutenants. We used to have at least a few more sergeants, now we're down to fifteen. We've, we've pretty much taken off the top and compressed down about as much as I believe we can.
Are all the sergeants making the same?
No, there's several steps.
There's different steps. Well, we'll talk about that Thursday and sheriff and go from there, um...
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think Debbie has...
But this was an adjustment for all fifteen, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, but go, so, are we done with the sheriff sergeants for now? Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Debbie, have you done anything with this one, or are you aware of it?
Right, and, and I had a couple proposals that I went over with the sheriff with, so...
Okay.
And I put that in the information that I sent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, just going back to the proposal, uh, related to non-bargaining, uh, as I mentioned, um, the current budget, I have, uh, 3% across the board for the non-bargaining department heads and elected officials. Um, and the non-bargaining, um, people on the GS scale that Debbie, um, is in her proposal, uh, recommending the equity adjustments and the merit adjustments, um, down here in this table down below. The addition in salaries only for that proposal, um, over what I currently have, which is the 3%, is an additional sixty-three thousand. It would be in the general fund, fifty-two thousand eight nineteen, and then in the other funds, um, that's, uh, mental health and secondary roads, an additional ten thousand two seventy-nine. And so, that's with the proposal that Debbie sent, I guess, a couple different things. So, we need to determine, and we've done this by resolution, um, the across-the-board increase for non-bargaining, the across-the-board increase for department heads, and then we need to take a look at the compensation board recommendations for elected officials and make a decision on that. So, I'm not sure where you want to start, if you want to start with the non-bargaining and this, uh, if you want to wait until Thursday to make those decisions, uh, have some more time to think about it. If you have any other questions, I'm not sure what you'd like to do, uh, as far as... But we need to make those, those decisions on those groups. And then there are some people outside of the non-bargaining, um, GS scale. Debbie kind of broke it all down for you on the, uh, on the back of the, um, proposal that she had sent out. But we have, we have a couple people salaried in a different group, they include those, uh, people, uh, a couple employees at the dispatch, um, and, um, and some people at county social services, who, who are no longer on the GS scale. So, they have received, uh, in the past, the across-the-board increase that the non-bargaining people have received. Then there are people outside of that, sort of the, um, yeah, go ahead, Debbie, sorry.
They just insert in there too, that, that, those people in that, those groups aren't, because they're not on a range, they wouldn't be in the merit pool unless their boards ask for something special.
Okay. So, so there are a few outside, people outside of this, um, plan, is, I guess, the point I wanted to make, but...
So, what are you looking for then?
Well, do you want to make a decision today, uh, do you want to make a, you know, put it on for Thursday?
Are these...
Three percent's in there.
What I have right now is a 3% across the board.
Okay.
You know, I don't have a problem with that 3%, considering where the bargaining was at. I think bargaining ended up about two and a half, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know. But anyway, it's hard for me to, to do anything today, uh, along with the agencies, for the mere fact of where that number's at, because that number, to me, is too high right now. And we've got to somehow get that down, and, um, I don't know where it's going to come from, but I surely don't want it on the backs of the salaries. Because we try to keep the bargaining and the non-bargaining somewhat close, because over the years, we kind of left non-bargaining out. Then again, that number, I'm not, I won't support that number, it's there now, so we're going to start cutting it somewhere.
Okay, I, I will just mention, um, on this plan, as Debbie indicated, the past two years, um, when HR started looking at this situation with the non-bargaining, you know, I think our initial number a couple of years ago was two hundred and some thousand, and, and, uh, the board at the time, um, said, you know, we can't do all of that in one year. And so, we, we decided to try and split it up over, over three years, kind of, kind of was the plan. And so, we did do, as Debbie mentioned, uh, equity adjustments in FY eighteen, around sixty thousand. Last year, they were around twenty, uh, this, this year, she's, we're looking at around thirty. But as she indicated in her, um, in her proposal to you, um, that would really get us to the point where I think there might be one or two people that would, would not be there yet, and we would be looking at them next year. But if the board then did decide to start, um, this plan that she is, um, looking at as far as merit increases, we, you know, we could hopefully avoid, uh, having this issue in the future and continuing to discuss it each year, because, um, we could then get people moving on the pay scale. You know, the, the, uh, the bargaining units all move, uh, in addition to the across-the-board, they all, uh, move on their pay scale through a variety of steps. And I don't think it was the intention when the non-bargaining, um, uh, policy was changed that the non-bargaining people would no longer move, um, you know, in their pay scale. So, I guess I just want to throw that out there, um, you know, because if we, if we don't do anything this year and we let that go, we're going to get ourselves back into the situation where we have these equity issues, and so...
I guess I support doing the equity adjustment, um, and I would say, let's, Debbie, make sure that we have this merit, um, program in place, completely for next year's budget, which I think is completely possible.
I agree, and let's look at the number Thursday.
That's good, but yeah, I do too, I like the merit side of it, and I like making this, yeah, getting this cleaned up. I think it is something going forward we want to avoid.
Okay, so, um, the department heads, uh, are not included in this scenario. And so, in the past, we've, we've done an across-the-board for department heads, and how many are there, Debbie? Five, four? There's five. So, I just want to throw that out there, I don't know how that will impact what you want to do as far as an across-the-board increase for department heads, because they don't have a pay range, is that correct, Debbie?
What we've done in the past is, uh, department heads and directors like conservation, health department, VA, get the same as non-bargaining, 3% or 2% or 5%.
Right.
So, that's what we've done in the past.
Right, and I'm, I'm just throwing it out there because we are looking at doing something different with the non-bargaining, and so I don't know what you would want to do, go ahead, Debbie.
Let me just point out that Rory and I are the only two that are really not in that same pool, we're on the GS scale. And so, I guess, currently, we would be in that merit. Now, if you want to pull us out, I guess that would be up to you, I should have probably mentioned that. So, uh, we are the only two on the GS scale.
To pull you out would, to put you as a department head?
Right, or, or...
The board has kind of went the other way over the years, to bring everybody in as a department head.
And I'm not suggesting you do, I just wanted you to be aware that we are, us two are on the GS scale.
So, the five are the VA director, the health department director, IT director, county engineer and conservation director.
Right.
Who's, who's the other, you got, you said there was four department heads, who are they?
There's the VA director, the health department director, IT director.
Okay, so you're counting them as department head, I count them as a director.
Yeah.
And again, they've received what we put out for non-bargaining over the years.
And there's, I'm just saying, those, those people aren't actually on the GS scale. The health department director has, that position has been scored, and there was a time when Tom O'Rourke was on it, and then off it, and on it, and off it, so that's kind of been a decision of their board, whether they actually want them on that or not, so... Currently, um, the current director is not on the GS scale.
Now, over the years, all the various departments, the VA, the health, conservation, they all agreed to what the board awarded for non-bargaining.
So, is it the merit we're really questioning as far as...
I guess, yeah, if you're going to give, uh, merit increases to the non-bargaining, do you want to consider that for department heads as well? That's, that's my only question. And we can talk about that on Thursday, or you can think about that before Thursday.
I'd like some more information on that, probably, but, yeah.
Um, so then the other thing is elected officials, and of course, that is based on the recommendations from the compensation board. Um, and they came back with a recommendation of, uh, 5% for the sheriff and 4% for all other elected officials. And I sent you an email yesterday, um, just to give you some various options, um, if I can find it. And I don't know if you want to wait till Thursday to make a decision on that, but, um, per the code, oh, I've got it right in front of me, um, you can, um, so you cannot exceed the amount that was recommended. Um, you can decrease the, the percentage, but you have to decrease the percentage, you know, equally. And so, um, so I gave you some of those various options. You can either go with what was recommended, uh, five and four, uh, if you reduce it by 25%, that would be, um, 3.75% for the sheriff and 3% for all others, and then, you know...
So, you're saying, you're saying we can't get it even all across the board?
Yeah, we across... No, because, because the compensation board recommended...
And this is a new language, because the code changed on that just a few years ago?
No.
It's been there a long time.
Yeah?
Just for the supervisors?
They did, so the supervisors, uh, have an exception, and so you can, um, you can elect to give yourselves, any kind of reduction other than, you know, doesn't have to be equal to the others.
Yeah, the others just have to be equal, if we make a 1% reduction in sheriff, that means a 1% reduction for the rest of the elected officials.
Right, the supervisors you can do.
Yeah, and we can do them whenever we want, so...
I kind of like keep them all even, which I know we can't do this year, making what the compensation board did, but, um...
So, do you want to, you want to wait till Thursday and make a decision on that, or you want to decide now, or?
I don't under, we could decide now, as far as I'm concerned.
Can we pull up the comparison of the other counties?
Uh, yep.
It's one thing, I agree with the sergeant out there, he says we compare salaries here locally, like to Waterloo. We don't do it to other counties, and there's too many variables of other counties, there ain't one like Black Hawk County. But I think it's been common knowledge over the years that all elected officials, including supervisors, are lower than the top five counties. We're also different, too.
But, yeah, being fifth-largest county, and I said, yeah, and that's the only thing we have to compare with, is other counties similar size, really.
And still, there's differences, tax base, everything.
Sorry, I have to go into my email to do it.
That brings us to a point we haven't talked about yet, and I don't know if we, Thursday, we said, we talked about a market study, or looking at our salaries and assessment, that type of thing, as far as where we were, um, with our market, with our local market.
Doesn't, uh, Gerner City Valley Alliance have that stuff?
Not to the degree, I think we'd be making the comparison, I will work for it, it has some too, but I don't know if they... Debbie, did you plan to address that on Thursday about the salary assessment, or what the benefit of that, or could we do it other ways? Or, you know, we talked about it being forty to fifty thousand dollars if we did a salary, um, assessment of everybody, I suppose, in the county. But I thought, is there other ways we could do that?
A couple of years ago, I actually talked to, um, Carlson Detmer about possibly doing a salary, uh, study for us, compensation study. Thing that you want to do is, you know, if they come in and they, and they assess it and they identify problems, then you don't want to ignore those problems. So, you know, you just have to be prepared that, you know, uh, if, if we do that and we find out we're more out of whack than we thought we were, it could cost several hundred thousand dollars to fix it, possibly. I'm not saying it will, because I think, you know, we, we've done our, our due diligence as far as, as we can, but, you know, it is, when you're trying to compare things to the market, uh, they will also compare, uh, not only our comparable counties, they'll, they'll, they'll look for other benchmark jobs, you know, that are, as similar as they can. They have to be about a 70% match to be considered a comparable job. So, they would look at other municipalities and, and cities in the near, in the roundabout area. I've, uh, participated in a few as well, uh, for other counties, and then we usually get their results. But, uh, it is a pretty, uh, labor-intensive process, um, and then they can, and then, and then they would, not only with that, they would probably, uh, overhaul our, our classification system. So, right now, we use the point factor system, um, and they might still have a, a point factor, but... but it would probably change all the factors in, you know, how we would grade those. We'd have a different point system.
Are there other options, of ways to do similar, you know?
Because I'm not sure, I understand.
I guess, are there other options, that a $50,000 study, for someone to come in and do that? Are there other ways that...
Well, I think, you know, we could send out, try to, we could attempt to do our own with our comparable counties. We could send out, you know, here's our jobs, here's our summaries, send them out and see where they're at.
I'm not in favor of that, myself. I sit at the table with 21 other supervisors for mental health, and 20 will make way more money than we make here, so.
You guys are way below.
Yeah, yeah.
You are.
The supervisors, as supervisors?
Yeah.
All honor.
You know, everybody here, everybody here in the county knows what they're getting paid. When I worked at Deers, I didn't know what my supervisor was making, you know, I don't know, people know all this stuff. No, I know it's public information, but if they're not happy, you know, there's, they're making good money, in all honesty, and they've got good benefits, you know.
The benefits are good.
Hard to compare with anybody in the county that's got the kind of benefits that we got. I don't have them, but you guys got them.
No, I think, I was just, when we talk about sometimes the salaries are...
I can't see spending $50,000, because you know damn well it's going to come in, and we're not up to speed with other counties, but we're Black Hawk County.
Well, no, I'm not proposing to do the 50,000. I was wondering how we assess our...
I don't think we have, I don't think we have the ability to do it internally. From what I've heard from other department heads, I wouldn't trust what we get from internally.
Well...
So what do we...
Nefisa's got a comment.
Sure. Nefisa wants to make a comment.
Do I say my name first?
Sure, okay, thanks, Nefisa.
Nefisa Boye, Public Health Director. One of the things I wanted to mention, because we're talking about Black Hawk County being different from other counties, to be honest, internally with the health department, when I started, what I did was to look at other health departments in the agencies across the different counties, and see how also they align with the state. And so, we don't necessarily want to be so different from other counties, because that can pose a problem, right? So if the state, for example, is stating, "These are the directions in which local health departments need to go," my responsibility is to review other health departments as well, and say, "Okay, what are their structures? How do their job descriptions also align?" So that we can, we can be comparable. That's how you can compare data. And so even with, in terms of income, it does pose some inequities, and also morale issues. So the hiring practices that I have are relatively different than the previous directors. What they look at are completely different than what I'm looking at. And so I really want to encourage, like, the discussion of us being very different, to, for us to be very careful, because it translates different to my staff and how they process. I encourage them that we need to be aligned with the direction in which the state is going, and other local health departments, in which, I've also sent information for you all, I think it was yesterday, how we're all aligning. So I just want to be careful, because they use that in terms of, well, Black Hawk County is different from other counties. Yes, but difference can also pose a problem, so thank you.
So, up on the screen, and I think you all received that from Debbie, is the comparison of elected officials, department heads, to eight other counties, I believe.
It's nothing new information, it's been that way for a long time.
So if anybody wants to propose on, we're talking about elected officials right now, a recommendation for what the board wants to do with that, if you're ready to make a decision on that.
I mean, I could propose just accept the recommendations of the compensation board for all positions except...
So that would be 5% for the sheriff, 4% for all others.
I'll second that.
I think this would be a resolution, would it?
Pardon me?
Would we have a resolution, then, for that?
Probably, yes.
You want to take official action, we can.
Yes.
So we got a motion, we got a second, two...
Five and four.
Five and four. I'd rather see it get a little bit more evener, but that's fine.
Good. That's your own four.
Well... Okay, roll call, Grant.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
No.
Okay, what else, Susan?
Okay. I will then take those other proposals, and put them in the budget, and we'll come back Thursday to take a look at the options, and what we see there. So the next couple of things, we have, we have capital, which is going to be probably fairly lengthy.
We can hear that Thursday.
I don't know if we want to start that today, or...
Should we vote on the board?
Yeah.
Supervisors?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't vote supervisors the same?
You did. I mean, it's included, it's just you have the option of separating it up.
I thought, I thought we were taking it separate.
I thought we were, too.
Oh, okay.
You have four, five.
Oh.
Four on all elected officials, except sheriff, if you want to.
Yeah, but we're at three, right? Didn't they recommend three for us?
No.
No. No. You do have the option to recommend a lower for you, but that wasn't the motion I don't think Chris made, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, my motion was just accept what the board, compensation board sent to us. I think we could do a second motion, right? So if somebody wanted to offer that, we could...
Has to be somebody that was in favor of it.
I will.
I'm fine with what they recommended.
Great. Do you want to reconsider here?
I want to reconsider on supervisors, 2.5.
I'll second that, I guess.
I don't know what the logic is of that, I think, elected officials just as important as the next one, or the next one, or the next one.
And we are considerably less than everybody else.
I mean...
Yeah, but we're not here all the time. These elected officials, the other ones are...
Yeah, different responsibilities.
I know.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second? And to re-clear what it is?
Yes.
Grant, roll call, please.
Leyland?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Okay, one thing, Tony, when you stepped out of the room, we had a little chat with the sergeant on the, are you familiar to talk about it today? We said we'd do it Thursday, but if you want to talk about it while he's here, it might be beneficial.
So, I got pulled out, because we have another, we're still not done with our security system over in the jail, and they had a phone conference this morning that was going on at the same time, so I just got a brief up on that, which didn't go well, so. So I wasn't a party to that conversation, and I don't know what was said.
Did you see the, did the sheriff have a copy of that?
I, so I read what Marty wrote...
Yeah.
Ahead of time, and his original proposal was to tie to the sheriff's salary, which I kind of encouraged him, he did not want to do. My counterproposal was, if you want to tie to my salary, then you don't get overtime, just like anybody else tied my salary doesn't get overtime, because then there's the very real, contrary to compression, is that now, if they are tied to my salary and get overtime, they're going to leapfrog their supervisors as well. Obviously, when we, when we did our budget discussion last week, I cautioned you, our concerns about the compression issue. We're trying to continue to reinvent the sheriff's office from the inside out. We're trying to encourage good, strong leaders to take that promotion exam, to become supervisors, those top deputies that for 3%, 4%, 5%, won't even look at that, because the first thing that happens is they immediately lose all their seniority, they become the lowest sergeant in a new bargaining class, in a new group, and they'll get Mondays and Tuesdays off, least desirable shift, and there's no real strong incentive, other than pay. And so, the strong suggestion, or the strong encouragement to you is, if we can incentivize that at all, that's the strongest carrot and stick, to try and get those strong leaders to be motivated to make that move. Otherwise, what we end up having is those, those that just really kind of like the title, and don't want to do the job.
Are they, they're not bargaining, are they?
They are not bargaining.
So they're non-bargaining, and safe to say, all 15 are in a supervisory position?
So all 15 are supervisors, they're first-line supervisors.
Okay.
The degree to which they supervise was kind of clarified, based on a lawsuit, well before I was sheriff. They do certain things, but they don't do other things.
Yeah, I remember that.
So, I'm cautious with my answers on what they do and don't do, because...
So if a new one comes in, Tony, then that wage is different than a sergeant...
Yeah, they've got steps, they've got steps throughout, yeah.
But you're saying, or Marty, you're saying, if they get to the top, it still isn't much difference from the top deputy? Is that what we're trying to say?
Right, a top deputy to the first step of a sergeant is not much of a step. And a top deputy with overtime, and a top deputy with the perk and benefit of, as a senior deputy, I can pick my shift, I can pick my days off, I have all of that seniority that I built up in that bargaining unit, that as soon as I go non-bargaining, and I'm the low man on the totem pole in the sergeant's group, I lose all of that.
Yeah.
So, for just a little bit of pay bump, it's not worth the risk associated with losing all of that other perk. So we're trying to figure out the best way to incentivize that, and Deb has worked on a plan, and Marty has an alternative plan to do just that. When I was asked, "What is my interest?", I really have no interest, other than there's this, there's this paradigm that has to work. As we continue to entertain our unions' contracts, they have to be fairly compensated. In the middle ground, we have to have a marginalized, or a large enough margin that encourages those great leaders, those young up-and-comers, to take those tests to become those supervisors. And then the next step is, because again, when they get compressed in between the first-line supervisor and the second supervisor, those steps have got to make sense, and that's the only interest that I really have. And right now, we don't have a large enough step, and I think Deb recognizes that as well. So we're trying to figure out what, what makes sense to get that bump, and get that boost, to encourage and incentivize that.
Could you go away from the major, and cut down on the major and the captains?
So, one of the reasons why I walked away from the major's position, it was, it would have left that body unprotected. A major is a non-civil service position, where a captain isn't. A captain is still protected by civil service, so if anything were to ever happen to me, a captain could still be a captain. And so, I've got three captains, I, before me, there were four, there was even five at one point. I've got three, so I redistributed our staff under three divisions. I've got three lieutenants that run the day-to-day operations on all three shifts, and then, really, where the rubber meets the road is those sergeants. That non-bargaining group, they run the day-to-day operations. They're the ones that are the workforce, and they're right there, rolling up their sleeves, working with the staff every single day.
So you've got three divisions, right?
I've got three divisions, field services, special services, and the jail.
So then you got, how do you split the sergeants up there now?
So the span of control is between eight and 15, depending on where they're at. No more than 15 members would they be evaluating. Most of you are overviewing 10, that's about the average 10, is what they're supervising at any given time? That's who they're evaluating?
Tony, we had this discussion, I'm going to say, eight years ago, same thing, where...
About compression?
Sergeants and so forth. Didn't we do something at that time?
We didn't do anything permanently.
You have a staff.
I think, so what Deb recommended, and I don't know, again, I wasn't here when you guys were having this discussion, we've talked about several different plans. The plan that's sticking in my mind right now was a recommendation that we actually look at those steps, lop off a couple of steps, and then we tie directly to, if the union contract says, "Top deputy is $34.24," the first step for the sergeant is 10% above that. And regardless of what the union contract becomes, it's always that next step. That seems to make some sense, that's a permanent fix, it's a 10% bump, and I think that's tough to argue with. And then there's three or four steps associated with that from that point forward. Then you have some permanency in that fix. Where I don't know what that does is, on those lean years, when you say to the elected official, because the next one, they're all tied to that percentage of the sheriff, and you say, "We've got to hold elected officials at zero," now you start compressing that top end. So I don't know where you're at on the other side of that, either, but...
Now, the span of control for sergeants is 10 to 15?
That's where, yeah, and I think ideally, that's where you want to be. Somewhere eight to 15 is pretty reasonable, when you follow any kind of military or paramilitary evaluation, that's about where you want to be.
Because it appears when we face lawsuits, they attack, lack of supervision and lack of training.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Okay, does anybody else got anything more? I suppose we'll have to address this one more the other Thursday.
Yeah. I don't know if you want me to, I can take one of Debbie's proposals and plug that in here, so we can take a look at it.
Yes.
Yeah, you can do that.
What Rita do with her sergeants?
Yeah. See what you started, Rita? All about that extra money.
Before we get to the capital, are we going to talk nonprofit agencies?
Yeah, actually, and if you want to wait till Thursday on the capital, but then maybe we can look at nonprofit agencies. So I handed out this spreadsheet, it's up on the screen, it gives you the history since FY13 of what we have funded. Up top, and then the library funding is down at the bottom. So there's a column in gray at the end, the FY20, what was requested by each of the agencies that submitted a request. And so, I'll open it up for your discussion.
And I'd like to make a proposal, two-point proposal, just for starting discussion. First of all, come up with a process in the future, much like grant funding, where we have a formal process that nonprofits apply, and we set an amount that we have available every year, that's the first point. The second point is, I just make a proposal that we utilize the same figures we utilized last year for the same organizations, plus the Black Hawk County Fair Board, $2,000, and Greater Cedar Valley Alliance, $15,000, bringing it to a total of $87,316. And for the library, $150,000. And that's just, I'm making that proposal to start the discussion, and other, allow all the board members to provide input.
I think it's a good idea to have a set number. The board didn't have to worry about this. A few years ago, we had Solid Waste Monies, they covered it, and they had X amount of dollars, and they took proposals, but they had a criteria set up, too. Couldn't be for wages, couldn't be for, had to be for services, wasn't it, strictly services? And then obviously, that money went away, and so we've been struggling with it off and on. On the Greater, or Cedar Valley Alliance, the board, for a short period, contributed to that, but the board members saw at the time that they saw no benefit to the county, and we got engaged with the lobbyists up with the other large counties. And currently, we're paying what, a year for the lobbyists?
The lobbyist is about $20,000?
About $20,000, so that's when we got out of the market for the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance.
Yeah, we've had some issues, I think there were contrary, they were working on, opposed to what propositions were, so it was...
What was the other one you talked about, we didn't...
The Fair Board.
The Fair Board, we gave some last year, Deb... The Fair Board, we gave some last year, didn't we?
Uh, two years ago.
Two years ago.
Okay, and the reason on the Fair Board, I think it's important. I think they got a good program, but also the board has talked about their opportunity to tax just like we do. Uh, the biggest problem here is you're using tax dollars here, and some of the people who use these services might be the same people who are paying taxes, and you're gonna raise their taxes in order to cover these, and then they have these services. So i- it's kind of a slippery slope there in a way. Um.
I do like the idea, though, of setting something, maybe some.
Well, I, I think so. I think so. But the only thing, problem with that was by doing that, we could have just a rotten year. I mean, everything falls out, the commercial, backfill's gone, and you name it. And you're still, you know, you're sitting here with that dollar amount unless you leave that flexibility to the board that they could cut it off that year.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could I just ask Mr. Trailka to repeat the figures that he gave? I didn't catch them all.
Sure. I'm sorry. Uh, the same amounts, uh, we allowed for last year, plus two thousand dollars for the, uh, Black Hawk County Fair Board, and fifteen thousand dollars for, uh, the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance, for a total of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars, and a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the library.
So if we were to agree that we would wait and do the process, do a process and have some information on the website and do that type of thing, um, that would, it could be determined late, at a later date, wouldn't have to be decided now.
Right.
Correct, yes.
And would give others maybe an opportunity to apply or submit.
And see, the board didn't sit on that committee. What they did was each board member appointed, um, a citizen. So they had their representative on there, and then they made recommendations to the board, and the board sometimes followed them, most of the time, but other times they didn't, so. Supervisors were indirectly involved with the decision. Um, you had some that, uh, every year applied, some that wouldn't, and they come back two years later and so forth, and.
I made that statement to Mr. Little this morning, too. If we're, if we're looking at taking, say, I was looking at a hundred thousand dollars when I went home last night after I was looking at figures, a hundred thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand for the, the libraries. And then I got to thinking, you know, we are taxing the same people that are gonna be using those services, and so I'm in favor of myself getting rid of the whole thing. It, making a thing of the past, you know?
You mean, any, any agency funding?
Don't fund any of these agencies anymore.
Well, the library, we've asked before if it's for wages.
Libraries, yeah, that's.
Now, there is a, what, a, a, what is it? A code, or?
Yeah.
We gotta pay a certain amount?
Yeah.
There is, and I just want to, uh, I'll just mention on the libraries, it's, this is, uh, different than the, uh, nonprofit agencies. We are, that's in the rural fund, and we're, we're allocating a portion. Uh, rural residents obviously use the libraries, and, um, this is the only way they contribute to that. Otherwise, it's only the city residents.
For the library.
Okay, all right.
The nonprofits. There, there's plenty of opportunities for agencies to apply for monies out there.
And as. I think all these groups work really hard at getting all that money.
I think they do, too.
Values, valuable services done with these dollars, and this is part of what, what they rely on. And yes, you know, we're, this is property tax money, but, but somebody that's, um, would see, you know, some of their property tax money, but, but I need to utilize these services, they're gonna get way more out of the services than what the percentage is that they're paying into property taxes for those. So that's, I understand that argument, but it really doesn't flesh out in reality. They're definitely coming out ahead by utilizing these services.
You don't know that.
I, I do know that. That's, that's, uh, that's just like the economics of, of what the situation would be.
But if you look up there, um, would we pick up one, two, three, was there four new ones this year?
Mm-hmm.
Four new ones, and it'll keep growing every year.
And there were requests that were greater this year.
I, I would, I would support sticking to what we gave last year.
And not looking at anything.
And not looking at any new ones, and, um, if you want to get rid of the four H because they are taxing body, of course, we didn't give them anything last year.
They didn't get the timeline. They didn't make the timeline last year. It came late.
And for years, we gave to legal aid, and then they stopped coming and just took it for forgotten, and we, uh, cut that. And then I see now they're back in it because they got a new fundraiser.
Well, aren't the bottom ones listed? The Met, the Black Hawk, Soil and Water, Quad County Firefighters, and Black Hawk County, that, those have always been.
Yeah, we've never really, they weren't on the, um, they weren't on the solid waste or nothing. It was just something.
That's just something that's been ongoing. So that's a little different than the nonprofits, I guess. I don't know. No, no support for the process or changing the process or doing something?
Well, yeah, but I don't know. We're gonna change it today, are we? I mean.
Well, no, but we could. I mean, because actually deciding or making a determination on who gets what or what criteria we'd have, we can do that before July first if we wanted to.
I ju- I just think we need to leave flexibility with, uh, supervisors. If you have a bad year, that you're not stuck to, uh, doling out two hundred thousand dollars that you don't have, and I'm not sure you're getting it now.
Too. I agree. Like, every year, you take a look at it, and if it's a year that doesn't look like it's something that would work.
Well, it could be a two-pronged approach. You don't have to set an amount, but I think we should have a more formal process in the future.
I would like to see a more formal process. Um, it, you know, we, we get questions all the time, and, and it just feels, um, I, and I think I sent you some examples of, uh, what other counties do, and their forms, and their process, and the information they have on their website, um, in the fall. I think this was before you came, Dan, but, um, it would just be beneficial, uh, for, you know, I think as, as far as, eh, formalizing the process a little bit. Also, in those forms, um, where we're requesting information, uh, from them on how they're using the funds and making sure that, uh, because this is taxpayer dollars, how they're, you know, using those funds, and so we want to make sure that we, uh, have that, um, have that process in place, too.
Susan, could you, uh, submit to us, uh, what this process would look like so we can evaluate it and consider it?
Sure. Uh, you know, I don't know if it, this year, um, you want to decide on an, an amount. I don't know if you want to do an, a total amount and then later go back and decide how you want to allocate it, or if you want to go ahead and decide on the allocation, um, you know, a- at this time, we, we do need an amount to, to put in the budget this week so that we'll, you know, determine that, but, uh.
I think we can talk this through and come up with an amount today on what we're gonna do for fiscal year twenty twenty.
I don't think there's no doubt. We all agree that they're all excellent agencies.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
But the point, you gotta look at, too, the money's not unlimited, and it comes from one source. And if you think we got a lot of money, then get, do the funding in there, but I don't think we do. So I, I just, um, do one or two things. Fund what we did last year, those groups, or don't fund any of them until we start a new, uh, criteria process next year.
Well, would, well, what do you, how do you feel if we put, like, we're at seventy thousand, I know last year, but I was gonna say, give a hundred thousand dollars. Would that be a?
For this year or next year?
For next year, I mean.
Well, I don't know. For next year is something we're gonna have to decide, you know?
Well, I mean, to plug in for Susan's.
You mean for FY twenty?
For the, no, I'm not in favor of going anymore on what you had up there right now.
I'm the seventy.
Well, I'll, uh, enter, I'll, I'll make a motion based on my proposal. The agencies we funded at the amount last year, plus, uh, two thousand dollars for the Fair Board, and fifteen thousand dollars for Cedar Valley Alliance, and we'll see where that goes.
I would support that if we added something for Riverview Center to that, but.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that too much. I'd rather take some time and ask for more justification, I guess, for the fifteen thousand. I know it was.
Not a second?
Oh.
No.
Okay. Then we got a second to, um, Dan's proposal.
What did, what did you say?
You wanted to add, um.
Riverview.
Riverview Center. No, the.
Riverview.
I would amend my motion to include an amount for Riverview.
I would say twenty thousand.
Yes.
Okay. I second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Uh, why don't you give me a roll call, Mr. Beeter, on this? I think we're gonna need one.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trailka?
Yes.
White?
Little.
Layla?
No.
Little?
No. We tried.
So how did we, we, do, are we gonna discuss, I guess, the process, and you're gonna provide more information, and we'll decide on a process going forward?
We need to decide on an amount if we're going to put in anything in the budget. So if anybody else wants to, if you want to keep discussing it or any, make any other suggestions,
maybe we can think about it till Thursday.
Or bring it back on Thursday, but I do need an amount.
Then plug it in. Mr. Little made the suggestion, and I'd second that motion to leave it as is and, uh, take the libraries up to a hundred and fifty thousand. Maybe that was. And, uh, go from there for Thursday.
So you got one, two, three, four, five. You got six of them that we're gonna fund, same as last year. Is that correct, Susan? No, no.
There's, there's five up at the top.
Five in.
And if you want to do what was requested for the Met, they always request an increase of three percent, and then the remaining, these remaining ones down here. If you want to leave, uh, all of these at FY nineteen and do these remaining ones down here, um, and then move the libraries to one fifty, is that your?
We've never really messed with them other ones over the years. In fact, we didn't even discuss them. Uh, they weren't part of the Solid Waste Moneys or anything.
I know, but we do contribute to them, and since we have some new board members, need to be aware that, uh, we're giving, uh, in addition, I mean, or for some reason, there might be a change of thought on the board as to.
Okay, I lost you. Now you're talking about the four that are at the bottom of this?
The four, yeah, at the bottom.
Okay. Anybody have an issue with any of those four? People are on the same, I guess.
No.
No.
You see the balance very minimum, anyway. So anyway, what do we, have a motion and a second on the floor?
For the library, or for just, for keeping?
No, for seventy thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars at the top, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the library.
I think the amount would actually, would, wouldn't it go up to seventy thousand, three hundred with that?
With, with a slight increase for the Met would be.
Yeah, so about eight bucks, seven bucks.
Yeah.
So three twenty-three.
But there were not change in the top part, correct, Susan?
Seven, yeah.
Right, so.
Three twenty-three, yeah.
One, two, three, four. We're funding the five up there that we funded for FY nineteen.
It's a hundred and seven, it's an increase for the Met.
Okay, yes.
Seventy thousand, four twenty-three.
So, yeah, seventy-four, twenty-three.
Math was never my strong suit.
And then you want to do?
It's a moving target.
Does that include, are you including the libraries in this motion?
No.
No.
No, okay. So seventy thousand, four twenty-three is your motion?
Motion on the floor is to cover FY nineteen, um, nonprofits up there on the top.
Plus the addition for the Met?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna have to accept all them down there, the one, two, three, four.
But the, the Met amount changes, and I just want to.
I understand that, but I'm kind of breaking that out of the solid waste, but yeah, go ahead.
Who's, who's motion, who's motion is this?
Mine.
Okay, and your motion is to fund, um, everything on that FY nineteen column, the first five on there?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I'll make another motion when we're done to fund the remainder of Met one, two, three, four.
At the levels that show for FY nineteen.
At the levels they show, and then the third motion can be the library at the one fifty.
Okay, so the second motion, well, let's just wait.
Let's do the first motion. Are you clear what it is?
Yes.
Or we'll do a more motion.
Okay, roll call.
You're doing the first five.
Same as FY nineteen.
Okay.
All right. Trailka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
Layla?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Little?
Yes.
Yeah, make a motion, then we approve the one, two, three, four, uh, that you have listed for FY twenty.
Second.
And those.
And that reflects one increase, and that's on the Met.
Seven dollars.
Yeah, okay. So it's the numbers that are in FY twenty.
Twenty.
Right?
Yep. And along with that motion, I'll also include the library of a hundred and fifty thousand.
Second.
So that's all in the same motion.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trailka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
What do you got, Susan?
Capitol. Do you want to go, do you want to move to Capitol and talk about it a little bit?
Who do you got left? Capitol?
So we have County Social Services coming just to talk about their budget on Thursday, and, um, and then we have Capitol, um, and then I'll, uh, I'll put in these, um, items that we discussed today, and then.
We got wages to take care of?
No, we still need to make decisions on the non-bargaining and department heads.
But the Compensation Board is.
We only did elected officials today. And then, um, I'll plug in some options on the deputy sergeants, uh, but we'll have to make those decisions then.
Anything else, board? And if you think of anything else to announce Thursday that Susan can get, uh, I'm sure she'll take care of it for you. Capitol's probably gonna be a long list.
Gonna take us a while.
I, I sent you some information already on it.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Okay, board, anything else you'd like to discuss today?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
The votes be adjourned.